I believe that one is working. Will you please test it?
Testing. It's working.
Now that you're all awake, they have you ready. They have you ready. All right, guys. We ready to be Oh, sorry. I didn't. I'm sorry, Jimmy. I didn't know you left. We just won. You ready? Here we go then. Notice is hereby given pursuant to the Texas Open Meetings Act, Vernon's annotated civil statute, Article 625217, that the city of Smithville will conduct a council meeting and public hearing on February 10th, 2025 at 6:00 p.m. at the City Hall located 317 Main Street, Smithville, Texas. Call this meeting to order. Pastor Holt, will you lead us in invocation, please?
Let us pray together. God, how we thank you and how we bless your holy name. God, thank you for our city leaders and officials. God, we pray for them as they continue to lead our city in a magnificent way. God, we thank you for each city councilman as well as the mayor and the city employees that make all of this happen and move. God, I pray for the people of Smithville even in this hour, Godfather. There is a need. We ask you meet it now in your son's name. Now, God, be with us as we gather together to reason together. In Jesus' name I pray. We all sit together. Amen. Amen.
Kathy, will you please read the proclamation? Thank you.
Whereas the citizens of our community have long been aware of the historic achievements and contributions of individuals, and whereas the linkage of these contributions to education is recognized, and whereas without a strong, free, great nation, these contributions would not have been possible, and whereas we recognize and appreciate the culture, language, lifestyle, diversities, and corresponding aesthetic values of all Americans, including African Americans, and whereas all of these contributions have made our city, state, and nation the great society it has become. Now therefore, I, Sharon Forster, serving as mayor of the city of Smithville, do hereby proclaim February as African American History Month, and urge all citizens and institutions of the city and community to reaffirm their commitment to promoting awareness of and appreciation for the African American heritage and its place in American society.
Thank you. Jerry, are you ready? We'll have the presentation from Langford on the comp plan. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, friends of Smithville. Excited to be here tonight. Give you a quick update on the comprehensive planning process. I'm Jerry Conrato with Langford Community Management, and this is our chief planner, Tim Jenkins, here tonight to share with you what's going on, answer any questions, and general update. So, schedule of activities. I know everyone is very anxious, but we're right on track. The first year of the comp plan is really looking at a number of different pieces, digitizing maps, making layers, submitting the GLO requirements, which, by the way, Smithville was first in line, and with the GLO, this new program, we are setting the standards, setting the bar for this requirement that they have put on us. Not a suggestion, a requirement. We submitted the package, which I gave Jill a copy of that package. It includes the base studies, the needs assessments that we've reviewed, proof that we reviewed all of your current and existing plans, draft goals and objectives. Again, just draft because at this point, they want to see what's going on, make sure we've looked at all angles, and we're on track per their requirements, and proof of public meetings and community surveys that we've done that piece of it. So we're moving into, we passed that 35% mark. So technically, we're at the 35% piece of the plan. Moving into up to 65%, the next 12 to 15 months, we'll be releasing those studies and preliminary chapters for the council and the key stakeholders to review. Moving after that into preliminary review revisions of that draft and into final approval. They say by 30 months. We say absolutely 18 to 21 months. So that's what I just told you about. Milestone one was just the original setup, the kickoff meetings, announcing to the community what we're doing. Milestone two were those draft studies. They reviewed them. There was a little bit of information. They needed additional information, but once that passed, we went through with flying colors, and they told us, you're the first, and you're setting the bar. So that's good news. Next step, up to 65% of the plan will be completed. We've got a lot of the pieces together. Next step, up to sixty-five percent of the plan will be completed. We've got a lot of the pieces together. We've taken into account a lot of the community engagement pieces. We've drafted and looked at old plans and existing plans that you have in place, so we don't forget anything you've already done or duplicate efforts. Tim and his team have worked really hard on putting together the land use and the all draft. Not, nothing will go through anywhere until you all have approved it. The community's given more feedback on it when we're at that point. We still have the optional section, a study that we can do. We were, Smithville was allotted the full three hundred thousand, so we have a little extra space to do a special study, something that the community wants to look deeper, dive a little deeper into, and Tim will talk to you about that. Jennifer, can you go one more? Then we'll move into the final public meeting documents reviewed, revised, adopted, and then evidence of adoption and closeout. So that's the full cycle of the grant requirements. So looking at the engagement, we've heard a lot of questions about what's really going on, how many people are participating, what's happening. We've done not only the required meetings, which the grant itself requires three public meetings, and it doesn't really require any stakeholder meetings, but we were able to justify the full three hundred thousand by committing to more community engagement. In the early days, we committed to at least three stakeholder engagements. Official formal meetings, we've had those. We did a community survey. We got sixty-nine responses pretty quickly. But here's the interesting thing. Of those responses, we got twenty-two volunteers who said, we want to help in any way you need us. They gave us name, email, address, whatever we asked for. So you've got a very involved community. And we have some ideas about how to use those volunteers' time to look over the preliminary draft plans when we get closer in a little different angle than just a general community outreach. The forums were a side note to the plan requirements, but wonderful, very beneficial. They've all been taped, recorded, and transcribed and analyzed to see what common things everybody in the community is saying. So there have been, I think, actually five to date now. The presentation happened. I put it together before public facilities, which Tim will talk about that in a minute as well. Really good input, really good information from the community. So when we asked, tell us what you think. Interesting enough, people are saying the same thing. It, all of these transcriptions, all of these notes, all of these surveys come down to a couple of different topics with different common things that are duplicated over and over in different ways. So we put those together and looked, housing and development, historical preservation, community engagement. Your community really wants to know what's going on. Infrastructure and smart growth, workforce development, planning priorities, and economic vitality. These we hear in many different ways. So what I did is summarize those and looked for common commonalities. I put all the notes, all this feedback, all the survey results into an A I and said, give me what you see consistently, and what I got was this. Now then I went back and looked closer at things to make sure they were on track with what we were seeing. So take a minute to look at this. Infrastructure and growth. Any community is growing, any comp plan that's being developed. Your community really wants to know that we're taking proactive efforts to plan the infrastructure so that we can invite growth and that you can guide that growth that's preferred in your community with an emphasis on the reliance and utility capacity. Need for sustainable growth policies that protect existing residents while accommodating expansion. If you look at housing and development, we, we hear it not only here, but in a lot of Texas communities. There's a severe shortage of affordable workforce housing. Tim will talk to you in just a moment about some of the comments and things that he's heard through the forums, and I'm sure you've heard through the grapevine, through Jill, through different methods, that this is coming up over and over. Cohousing, senior living options. Other communities are looking at ways to make it more affordable with what they have. So it's not always possible to put a big senior community in, but there's some ideas that we're seeing across not only Texas, but the United States to solve some of those issues. Smaller, high-quality housing developments, but maintaining character. You don't want to put housing that's not attractive or not fitting into your small-town character. More flexible zoning to enable varied housing types while maintaining standards. We do have the zoning and ordinance review that's just recently kicked off. We didn't, we originally thought, let's wait till the end and then we'll look at all the things that have come up and put the zoning with it. But we found out pretty quickly that zoning needs to be analyzed in the early stages, looking for gaps, looking for places that resiliency needs to be integrated, because remember, this is a resilient community's comp plan. So looking at all that community engagement, everybody wants to be involved. They want their voices heard. But they want to know that we've heard it and we're doing something about it, not just hearing it. So we have an announcement about the new portal that we mentioned on, early on, that is almost here, or within just a few weeks. It took a little longer than we originally anticipated, but I guess we're learning that development lines just go that way. We, we, we do it when we can get it out, and it's going to be a game changer on how the community sees and knows more about what's going on, not only with the comp plan, but how we're listening and integrating those comments. But the need to balance economic growth and tourism with small-town preservation. On the way in, we saw the sign that said, Smithville, shop, eat, stay, play. So I said, oh, out of curiosity, let's just go around the town and see where can we shop? Where can we eat? Where can we stay? And where can we play? So just looking at what you already have and building and embracing that is part of our mission to assist you with the development of this comp plan. Finally, is planning priorities, really developing standards and policies for managed growth. Every community that is growing quickly in Texas, even if the census says it is not going to grow that much, we know what's going on. We've got our finger on the pulse, and we are seeing more and more demand for preferred and managed growth in every community, especially around Austin area where things are happening. So that's the goal of our comp plan, is to take all these things into consideration and continue moving forward. And when the time's right, get your review of the preliminary plans so that the community can ultimately adopt it and build on it. I'm going to turn it over to Tim to talk to you a little more about the specifics of what's.
Mayor, can I ask a question? And I don't want to get on a rabbit trail here, but you said something that I think can be very instructive to this whole process. You made the statement that the stakeholder group or what you're hearing is that the community does not want housing that doesn't fit with the small-town character. So the question I would pose to you, given all the feedback you've gotten from the community, is would a hundred-and-thirteen lot entry-level development by D R Horton on the entry coming in be consistent with what you're hearing feedback from the community on?
I think it would.
Okay.
Any development that's knocking on your door, you want to talk to them? Any development that's knocking on your door, you definitely want to look at that and take into consideration. But manage it and guide it versus letting it randomly take over. Did you have a question?
You mentioned you were integrating zoning and ordinance review opposed to normally you would not initiate that at this point, but that you're, you're looking over that. Our, I'm not sure where we are with this, and Mayor, you may have more of an update. I know that the ordinance review is an ongoing process and not all can't happen at once. How are you managing that as the ordinances are reviewed? And are you looking at current ordinances only, or, or until we get to the end of this process and maybe have some drafts of updates on some of our ordinances, those could be considered as well or added?
Absolutely, and I'll let Tim answer that about.
It's not that it's normal to wait till the end. It's just initially in our project plan, we thought we'd get to it after we did the land use plan and all the future growth planning. We realized that we needed to do it parallel. And because it's a moving thing, you may change your zoning ordinance while we're in the middle of the land use map, and that bike, that's, it's your zoning ordinance. You need to do what the city needs to be done. It's our job to keep up with that. And so, yeah, well, we're going to monitor any kind of changes, any zoning requests, change requests, anything that comes up, so the attorney's office finds something they they recommend that you change or amend an ordinance or we're also looking at the subdivision codes, building codes as well. So, you know, we'll bring it all together. At the time, we're also bringing you the comprehensive plan and all the elements of it.
Mayor, may I ask a couple of questions?
As, as you're moving into the meat of it here, just kind of going backwards a little bit, but these are process questions more than anything for me. And so my recollection at the beginning of the process, I thought we were going to use a steering committee concept. When did we switch to the stakeholder process?
Y'all tell me. I don't know. Did you change it?
Stakeholders are the steering committee? So is there a chairman or a leader of the stakeholder group?
Not to elect anybody like that.
Okay, how many stakeholders do we have?
Fourteen, something like that.
There's fourteen. There were a few that were replaced, but I think it was fourteen.
Yeah, it's.
How many active do we have?
Councilmember Jameson, do you mind?
I think, I think Mr. Wilkinson is one of our members.
Guys.
I can, I have done quite a bit of research, and I've chosen not to get back into this can of worms because I've already shared my opinions previously. But I will tell you, I'm very confident when we originally voted on this, there was specifically, the approach was going to be a steering committee, because I specifically asked the question about how important that steering committee chairman would be, because it would be a series of subcommittees that reported to that steering committee chair. That person needed to be very, very talented at organizing. At some, at some point after the city council approved the money, the contract, the approach, it switched from a steering committee concept to a stakeholder concept. You could argue that a steering committee is stakeholders. It represents stakeholders. That's a little bit of a nuance. But there were specific candidates in the community that were being talked about that would be awesome for that steering committee chair. I don't want to mention them because that horse is out of the stall now. But it did change, and there are two classes of stakeholders. There's a series of churches and nonprofits and all that. And one side and the other side is what I would call city staff, where the city manager, the mayor, Jill, and a number of, of, maybe some, maybe Edward or some from the city, Jennifer may be involved, but there's two buckets. Because y'all were very generous with giving me a very long email about how this was comprised a month and a half or so ago. So I do know that at some point after we originally approved the approach and the money, it switched from that steering committee format to a stakeholder. And, and the email that I had from Jill, if I remember, was that y'all had recommended that the best approach was to utilize a stakeholder approach. And so that was the rationale. That, that councilmember Jameson is based on a lot of information that I obtained. That's what happened. Not here to question whether it was the right decision or not. It was just a different approach to this process than what was originally approved by the council.
Well, my question more than anything is that with the stakeholder process, if there are fourteen, are we getting consistent attendance and participation? Or is it only six or eight that are there? Is it, are y'all tracking that?
Yes. We are tracking everything. The first three stakeholder meetings were in the early days, and that was pulling all the community input together from the leaders in your community. That PowerPoint presentation is online, by the way, where we identified the key stakeholders, which is what G L O calls them. We didn't say these need to be stakeholders. They said, identify key stakeholder group with the leaders in the industry, in the industries in the community. That's where we were given those key stakeholders. The first one had, I think, twelve to thirteen. I have the sign-in sheet. It was turned into G L O. And then the second and third had maybe twelve to thirteen. There was a little less at the next two or three, but there was participation. And then we did a land use workshop, which was not attended very.
Was that that one?
That's the one you were at. It was a smaller group. It was maybe not the best representation for land use, but we backed up and we got what we needed from the community on the land use. Still draft. It's got to be developed. But that process was identified by G L O and by your community, giving us the leaders and industry influencers that would be good to be on that committee.
Would you mind if you have it? Could you submit to me or us a recap of the stakeholders and which meetings they have attended?
Sure, I have a list of everyone, and I had sent it to, to you, Tom. Okay.
I actually have it. Yes, I mean, I'm, I'm happy to send it to Jennifer, and then she can share it so we don't run afoul of, 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 of meetings.
Okay, thank you.
As we look at this process, I'd suggest if you want to restructure, there's no reason not to. We're, we're going into the preliminary plan.
Yeah, I mean, I.
We'll set up an editorial board or?
Yeah, I, I think that the, the meat is the sixty-five percent. I mean, if I understand it properly. This next phase that we're going into will be when actual tangible recommendations are generated. You know, the reason I raised the question early on was because so much of what is generated in this first substantive phase is based off of assumptions, and we've had some conversations about what did you use for population growth? What did you use for business? It doesn't straight-line when you start with a four-thousand-person base. It doesn't grow at two and a half percent or one and a half. It grows at like fifteen percent. Once the, once it spills over, it spills over in a big percentage way because the basis is small, and then it declines. So I wouldn't be an advocate of going back at this point. I just would point out that we really need to be very, very careful at this next phase, that we aren't afraid, I don't think, to stop and challenge the assumptions that apparently were put together to make sure that we don't get too far down the road before, you know, because there's a lot of real, I mean, I asked one question that's a really, you know, pertinent, relevant question right now, is we're considering whether this will be the first large production home subdivision in Smithville, and the community is very mixed on it. If you've watched any of the meetings, and there's a lot of meetings to go. So when you say to me that you've had all these meetings and you feel like you've gotten a good representation from the, from the community, and the community is telling you, quote, that they don't, they don't want affordable housing that is not consistent with the small town. Most people would tell you the small town is not cookie cutter, every house looking the same. It's on, you know, tree-lined streets and all those things. Well, a D R Horton grid subdivision is nothing like that at all. So when you say that their community is telling you in these focus groups that they don't want that, and then when I ask the question, you say, no, I think you should go after it. I hope you can see where there's a potential disconnect there.
I do.
And I'm not looking to, to restructure at all. I would just like to know the quality of participation that we're getting, and if we have a need to appoint new people or replace people, it would be something we want to get ahead of.
One thing we did suggest is with the stakeholders we, we got, that they reach out and find experts in the community. And if they chose one of the categories to kind of specialize in or team up with somebody else, and they kind of become the lead team, say for transportation, go find that transportation engineer that lives in the community. Go find a demographer if they happen to live here, or if there's someone in the county you trust. We, we want to bring in as much expertise as possible. So it's, it's not that we want to enclose this and keep it within the group of fourteen or something like that. We were hoping the group of fourteen would act as community planners and go and gather information that we just can't. I can't do that for thirty different communities.
In your opinion, is that happening?
We're getting the input, but it's kind of coming a lot from the forums we've been having.
Well, I would offer that if you're not getting the participation that you need or the expansion and getting the subject matter expert, experts, then let us know, because we all have our own networks that we might be able to bring in some people that would help.
I think the time is now. Once, yeah. Once we have it set up to where it's going to be easy to go and review the documents, that's what we're asking. We want you to review the raw documents. Now, we've got the base studies done, but when I say raw, I mean, first draft of the community profile chapter or first draft of the transportation chapter.
How much of the three hundred do you think? How much of the three hundred do you think might be available for some special studies? You made reference to some extra dollars. How much, give me some sense of scale, scale.
About fifty thousand. We're not, we can't do a big, broad, like a full floodplain drainage system, but we can do a study on what would fit into that. So it's about fifty thousand.
I will say that I attended the last forum, which was about facilities. And you had the Carol Burns, you had the head of the, of the hospital, you had the head of the towers and you had Edward on facilities. And that was. And the airport manager, sorry, I did not mean to leave him out, but it showed, I had no idea how big the school district was, how far out it went. That was amazing to me. The school district goes way out. I had no unearthly idea how far out the reach was, what towers does and how they interact. Again, illuminating. I, all of you should look at that forum. It is online. It is a very interesting forum. That was a great deal about facilities.
And they were like, they are our three largest employers here. So if you have not watched the last one, it is online. If you need help getting to it, please let us know because there was a lot of information that opened our eyes there because of the large employees.
Yeah, a lot of what come out of that was housing choices.
Different things of that nature, so.
The, the juxtaposition of how can we draw master planned communities to try to get professional doctors and nurses to come live in Smithville, yet still build enough affordable to take care of blue collar and mid-management level of housing needs? And where does that, where does that occur? That's the, that's the land use map. And that's where we hope we can help you capture what is y'all desire, where you guide that growth. I mean, that, that's really what the mission here is. It's coming, we know that. We're projecting well beyond what the Census Bureau or any of the other demography, including the state, Texas State Data Center. We're using the water wastewater study projections. We're using the Texas Water Development Board hookup projections. And just like you say, central Texas common sense tells me we need to be looking at ten to twenty thousand by the year twenty forty-five. And that's, that's well beyond what any of those standard projections show. We have to account for those standard projections just to show we're being responsible. But trust us, we are looking that it's a faster growing future for, for Smithville. When I roll through this real quick, we've kind of hit on all this. We've done the base studies and assessments. We are working on the engagement online platform. Can you just keep rolling? Now we're in planned production. It's, it mirrors the base studies to some degree, except that base studies, we did street, streets, drainage, you know, analysis and studies and it's existing conditions. It's not projecting future needs. Now what we'll do is take those base studies and with whatever input we're getting, go ahead and try to identify goals and objectives that match what those needs are per infrastructure category, like utilities and street improvements, sidewalks even, if that's where you guys want us to maybe go deeper. There's, what I'm seeing that, just me coming out of the, the forums and the, our discussions with stakeholders and you guys, there, there's, there's a, our transportation forum became a discussion about sidewalks, getting people around town, connecting the different sections of town. I kind of drove home and I said, you know, we didn't really talk about arterial roads and the typical thing you do with a transportation planning session. And it was really more about connectivity in the community and what, what means are there to do that? How do you get across the, I was almost going to cuss, but how do you get across this railroad right of way and join two communities? And it's a huge challenge and, you know, may not happen in any of our lifetimes, but this is the chance to address those kinds of things and come up with creative potential solutions. You know, there's one thing about, hey, get it moved out and let's get some, do what Austin did and go buy railroad right of way and bank it until the time came right to talk to the railroad and get the rails moved. One of the, the traffic engineer who came to the transportation forum, he lives here in Smithville, I forget his name right off, but he, he had worked on that project. So he had that knowledge and it really opened you up about, man, maybe you can't move the whole rail yard, but maybe there's places that we can create other connections between town and, you know, is that the study? Or is it the study about the housing issue and, and how that ties the economy and workforce? I think as we review these chapters, that's where that'll, that'll kind of come into more focus for you. And, you know, well, we can't, you know, provide the money and do two different studies if need, but.
And, and if y'all will keep in mind, in terms of what we need to do up here to identify and secure the resources that we need to make all of this work. I mean, for me, one of the key components is the land use and planting and tied into water and wastewater because those are tools that we could use in our managing growth toolkit. Because if we designate the right areas and right purposes for land use, then we can then do things like build a future wastewater plant somewhere that we can develop arterial roads that go with it. And then we can help manage and push growth to where we want it to go, including the different times, types of growth. If we want the next subdivision that might be a D R Horton or something else, but we say in the future, the minimum lot size cookie cutter type homes mass production, let me be kind and call it that, in the future, they're going to have to go only here, here and here. And if we're going to have a high end development, we would love for you to be here, here and here. And those are the types of things that we've got to hopefully bring into focus as you guys progress through.
Well, I started as a junior planner in Round Rock. My city manager said, you're never going to say no. You're going to say just not there. That in Round Rock, there's going to be an opportunity for any of this type of housing, but it's going to be in the right place. And that's your job is to guide it to the right place.
We would love to have that too.
I think you will, but I'm confident in that. Any more about?
Is everybody good? Okay, thank you. Last, one last little tiny thing.
Sorry.
You didn't mean to cut you short.
Because this is the most exciting thing of all.
We told you in the beginning, we wanted to have a stakeholder community engagement portal. It is within a few weeks of rolling out. It's an amazing tool that, as I mentioned earlier, will be a game changer. It will show status at all times. People can go in and look at what others have made comments about. We can guide, train, educate through this portal while receiving feedback. And so it's a wonderful tool. We will be providing an introduction to it, training how to use it and guidance on how to utilize it for future growth. So just wanted to let you know, we're very, very close to introducing that. And that's it. Anything else? Okay. Thank you for always be available to answer our questions, Siri.
Be back.
Thank you.
Do you have anything else?
Okay.
Can I ask city council, C O U N S E L, a question? We're going to go into public comment and one of the issues that's come up in the community in the last few days has to do with a potential safety issue regarding trucks routes. I wanted the council to have a little guidance from you about, I know there's some strict rules about what actions council can take for items that aren't specified on the agenda. Is there a, a provision for something that might be an emergency or safety issue that we could take some action if we so chose to without it being on the agenda?
Not really action, no.
So, so how does a city deal with that? Let's just say you had, you know, a safety issue and you needed to direct the city manager to do something that was very time sensitive and, and you waiting the seven, two hours to post and have a special meeting wouldn't allow that. How does, how does city councils and governments get around that?
Well, it just, it just depends on sort of the hierarchy of who, who, as far, especially the city manager. I mean, the city manager in this city has a lot of authority to do a lot of things.
Right.
So if it's, it's an emergency, I mean, typically the city manager can do that.
Absolutely. But what if the city council wanted to direct the city manager to do something?
If the city council wants to meet and act.
Okay, but we couldn't do it tonight is what you're saying if it was.
There, there are things for certain emergencies that you can, you can post, you know, with ten hours or something kind of notice, but I mean, it's had to be pretty.
Fair enough. That's all I wanted. And I wasn't going to suggest we weren't going to, that we were going to propose any action. I just know this issue is going to be a little heated and there is some expectation that community, some requests for us to take some immediate action. I wanted to make sure everyone understood what we could legally do and not do tonight.
Something that comes up just sort of during the general public comment section, then what you guys could do is, you know, hear them out and then you can always schedule it, try to get it on another agenda. If we need to, then we could put it on a special, a special meeting, seventy-two hours notice. I mean, emergency is, is a, is a, you know, sort of a defined term and pretty, again, has to be pretty exigent.
Next item on the agenda, update from Bevco on the Second Street Drainage Project.
Mayor, council, thank y'all for having me this evening. I believe the last time I was here was in October, so just here to give you all a brief update of kind of what's been going on the, the last couple of months, where we stand today and where we're going. I think y'all have.
If you have a comment in the, he is talking up here. Could y'all please keep it and then let him have his time and then I'll let you have your time? Okay, thank you.
Y'all have the, the current phasing plan I'd sent to the city manager and I think he passed it on to y'all and is in the, y'all's council packet. To kind of give you a brief overview of where we're at today, project is approximately sixty-five to seventy, seventy percent complete as a whole. Storm sewer installation is approximately ninety-five percent complete. The contractor is currently working near the intersection of Gresham and Second. We anticipate they'll have the storm sewer construction at that intersection complete by the end of this week. And at the, once that's done, the only storm sewer remaining will be at the intersection of Main and Second Street, a very small piece there. Concrete improvements, most of the sidewalks are all installed, except for at the intersection of Main and Southeast, or excuse me, Second Street. Driveways, they're pretty much all in. Really, the only two main components that we have left are along Olive Street on the north and south side of Second Street. There's going to be a valley gutter in both of those areas. And then miscellaneous curb and gutter, both on the, I guess, east of Olive primarily. And then there's some at the intersection of Main and Second Street. Utility relocations, probably the biggest one that we've been dealing with over the last several months is Center Point Gas. We reached out to Center Point last March to verify conflicts that we've had with the proposed project. And I've talked with several people with Center Point over the last several months. They've sent people out at multiple times. There were conflicts, they've identified those and they have been resolved as of last Wednesday. The biggest thing that came up with how that Center Point has, their relocations have affected the project is we've postponed street reconstruction on this project to accommodate the Center Point relocations. Not that their Center Point gas facilities over this entire length of the project, rather where Center Point had to relocate their facilities has been at the alleyways between Ramona and Main, between Main and Olive and Olive and Gresham. And given those locations, if we were to do street reconstruction, we'd be hopping in between each of those. And given that we're changing the street grades, it, it just didn't make sense to kind of patch it along, along the way. So we, we decided to wait until Center Point had their facilities relocated. Couple of instances are where we've had to relocate the water line at the intersection of Main and Second Street and most recently Gresham and Second. Then also one in the alleyway between Ramona and Main. And as we've been installing storm sewer water services, there may be a few water services that are going to have to be redone as part of the street reconstruction. Lastly, as far as utility goes, electrical conduit. The contract will be working once we start the street reconstruction there at Main and Second. The contractor will be working with the city, the electrical conduit that feeds to the street lights at that intersection there, that conduit is going to have to be relocated and the city will be running new wire to the street lights. So that'll be going on. And that pretty much covers the utility relocations we've encountered or will be encountering. Street reconstruction, the plan was to start today. We actually postponed it until Wednesday. Primary reason for that is, is when we looked at the weather forecast this morning, I guess the most current forecast was getting, getting anywhere from a half to one inch of, of rain tomorrow. And the concern was if we started excavating out of there, we get rain tomorrow, then basically we'd have a huge mud hole that we'd be dealing with, which could potentially prolong the project or make the street reconstruction take a little bit longer. So what we decided is let's see what the rain does tomorrow. And the plan right now is to start Wednesday morning with the street reconstruction between Main and Ramona Street. Contractor has communicated to the property owners, they are aware of it. The plan would be to excavate the street down and reinstall limestone rock base from Main to Ramona. Once that's complete, then we'd move to the intersection of Main and Second Street, lower that down. Then at that intersection, while that's being done, the sidewalk would be finished up as well as the curb ramps at the, that corner. There are a little bit of storm sewer, as I mentioned. Basically get, get everything done with that intersection and then cut down the street and finish from Main to Olive Street, get that cut out, put base down. Once we have base completely installed between Ramona and Olive, we'd come in there and hot mix the whole thing, stripe it, and then that section would be completely done. And then we'd be focused on from Olive going eastward. Right, right now, as far as timing wise, there has been a little extra time added to the project. The original end date was May twelfth. As you can see now, we show May thirtieth. And the primary reason for that is some of the utility relocations that we encountered. We added extra time, not a planned thing. So there's some extra time associated with that. Talking with the contractor, indication of what he has told us right now, weather dependent, of course, but we don't see any, any reason why we can't finish by that May thirtieth timeframe at this point. All in all, that's kind of where we stand today. Are there any questions anyone has?
Real quickly, so when, when you've got the asphalt, you know, the resurface from Ramona to Olive, what date you think that will be done by?
I'm anticipating it'll be the last week in March, that March twenty-first through the twenty-eighth.
Okay.
Or, or that week, I should say.
Okay.
Kathy, you have any questions about Second Street Drainage?
I'm excited it's coming along. For as long as people have been flooding on our main street and our businesses, this is going to be a great asset to have sidewalks and, you know, handicap rails and many things. So it's been a process, but I'm thankful for the process and I appreciate all your hard work. And do you have anything to add, anybody?
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Next item is approval of the minutes from the January thirteenth, twenty twenty-five council meeting and the public. and the public hearing, January fifteenth, twenty twenty five special call council meeting and January twenty eighth, twenty twenty five special call council meeting. Do we need to add anything or does anybody need to make?
I've got one point, a question on the special call meeting minutes from January fifteenth. And I seem to recall that Jason that the city attorney actually did not make that presentation on the potential Pid. So we want to strike that.
Thank you. Anything else? Anything on the January twenty eighth meeting that needs to be added? I'll entertain a motion if everybody is good with them.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes for the regular session and the two special sessions with the amendment that was made by Councilman Jameson.
I'm sorry, Mayor, I did have one thing I needed to ask Jennifer. If I could just have for the record, insert the opening statement that I made at that meeting, just for the record. I'll give you a copy of it. Yeah.
Do you have it with you?
Yep.
You want to hand it to her? So make sure we have it. Oh, thank you, Tracy. Okay, so will you add that for the insert?
And we'll have a another amendment for the insert to be put into the minutes.
For the January twenty eighth?
For the January twenty eighth meeting.
Very good. And did I get a second?
I'll second that emotion.
Motion's been made in second. All in favor. Motion is approved. Next item is public comment. And Jennifer, will you please read off?
First, I have Dean Hawthorne.
First of all, I appreciate being here this evening. My name is Dean Hawthorne. I'm a member of the Smithville Church of Christ that meets a northeast whitehead. We are literally a town on a on a dead end road. We've been in the community for decades and nobody knows where we are or what we do. We are in the middle of a residential area. The signage for the congregation, you have to be lost to be able to see this sign. So nobody knows when we have service. So what we did is is prepared a little flyer that we intended to put on the doorknobs of the about a hundred homes that immediately surround the church building. And this little flyer simply indicates who we are, when our Bible study hours are on Sunday and when church service is held, and provides information about our phone number and how you can look us up on the web. Very simple and direct. One of the members of the congregation pointed out that we might be subject to something called the peddler's permit. And so I checked with with city staff. And they graciously provided me with a copy of the application and the ordinance. And in reading that, I just didn't feel that we were subject to the provisions of the ordinance. Nor did I think it was appropriate for us to have to pay a fee to be able to distribute a simple flyer. Nor would we be subject to the bonding requirement of the city ordinance. And so I mentioned that to staff. They said they would check with other individuals and get back to me whether we were subject to the provisions. And she did that, contacted me later. And she said she had met with the mayor and chief of police and discussed the matter with them. And that, yes, in fact, we were subject to the city ordinance. And necessary, it would. But in this case, they would waive the fees and the bonding requirement on this one occasion. But in the future, we would be subject to those fees and bonding requirements. So we'd have not gone ahead and with distribution of this simply because if we do, then and we've agreed then that we are. And we appreciated the fact that you waived the fees on this one occasion. But if we proceed, then in the future, if we want to do anything, we've are in agreement that we will, in fact, pay the fees and obtain the necessary bond in order to be able to promote our religion. We just don't feel that we're subject to it. We're not peddling anything. And so we asked the council and legal staff to take a look at the intent of the peddler's permit and make a determination, again, a formal determination of whether about whether or not churches are subject to the.
Yes, sir, we're going to look into that, but we appreciate it. And it was brought to my attention. And so I had to go read all the the ordinances. So we will look into that, okay? And I know that our city manager will be in touch with you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you for coming in. Yes, sir, thank you. Next, I have Lee Kilgore.
Hi, good evening. Thank you, Council. My name is Lee Kilgore, four oh three Ramona. I've come to talk tonight about something that has kind of been bothering me for the last couple of meetings. And it is in regards to the resilient communities program. And I heard a little bit tonight about maybe what the issue is. Council is bringing up a stakeholders' meeting. The documentation that was presented to council a couple of years ago is key stakeholders' organization. And it's semantics. Y'all might have been thinking it was a stakeholder or a steering committee. They're thinking it's a stakeholder meeting. In my opinion, it doesn't matter. There's not one specific person in this community that has the ability to answer all the questions, to talk about what's needed for the comp plan. We have hired through a grant, three hundred thousand dollars worth of Langford Community Management Services. They've been in business for forty years. They specialize in state federal grants, programs covering infrastructure, economic development, housing and planning services. They are the experts, the subject matter experts. We have also gathered one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, community leaders to be on this stakeholder group, to bring their subject matter expert to each category. The huddles, if we want to call them huddles, or the work, what are they called? Special called meetings where we gather in here and we have community leaders. Forums. Okay, forums. Those were subject matter experts as well. Went to T M L, met with land use development specialists, brought them to our community, engaged with our community. I I would like to, I guess, just say that I don't think that we should discount the key stakeholders' opinion and input just because the group is labeled as a key stakeholder. It demeans the work that they're doing. It demeans the people who are on those committees. And the comp plan is working. Let's let it work. Thank you.
Next, please. Brandon Dunham.
Hello, Brandon Dunham, Turner Taylor. Going to preempt some people, I guess, with the truck traffic. Wanted to kind of explain some situations. If you look at my address, I'm right next to the gravel pit that the county has, where they store all their materials. Truck traffic is something I'm very accustomed to, the road condition. And it's something that I've been meaning to to speak to Robert and Clara Beckett about. Road condition in front of the the plant is completely, I mean, the gravel's completely spilled onto the road toward there is only real one path unless you cut into the fire departments right away. It's not maintained. There's dirt all over the road. There was almost an accident two weeks ago because of all the gravel just on the road. They couldn't come to a stop. My entire yard was full of dust from them slowing down, trying to get stopped. People go through there very fast. But one thing I do want to say about Clara Beckett is right after the budget came through, they started getting a bunch of materials. Six AM, they started dumping the materials, banging the tailgates, instantly woke me up, doing it all day. Probably every ten fifteen minutes. I assumed it was a one day thing. Second day started happening again. I emailed her eight AM in the morning. She responded by nine. It has not happened since. That was two years ago. It's a very simple correction. We have this noise ordinance where even accounting property is subject to the amount of noise that's being output on that property. But yet we have a contract with this contractor saying that work can start at seven, which is before the noise ordinance is allowing work. So things like that are a little troubling. And I think that some of those can work for them as well, too. I had something else, but I don't remember what it was right now. So but appreciate it.
Thank you. Next, I have Brian Wells.
Mayor, if I may ask a question while Mr. Wells is coming up. Earlier today, we were going through an email exchange where Mr. Wells had requested some additional time. Are you going to be willing to grant him more time?
Would like for him to stay within the three minutes. Because we have other people to speak and and so I want to make sure we hear everybody. So if you could please stay within the three minutes, it would be nice.
I'm going to do my best. I'm not good at talking fast, but I'm going to try. Brian, hang on just a second. Given that Mr. Wells is a subject matter expert, is a civil engineer and has worked in many similar projects in his career and representing the position of several residents on the hill and that we as a city must first and foremost be vigilant in protecting the health and safety of the citizens and their property. I would like to move that we grant Mr. Wells an additional five minutes. That's a motion.
We don't usually go like by giving him his minutes. How long do you need, Mr. Wells? How much, how long do you need?
I I I have this exactly written out. I'm going to try to get through as fast as I can. I haven't had an opportunity to practice it, though.
No, I understand.
I trimmed out at your request. I condensed it and trimmed it to to the bare bones.
I would like to keep it within the three minutes because other people want to speak also. And you're welcome to each come up here and speak. I would love to hear what you have to say.
Mayor, can the council entertain a motion to grant him additional time?
I have made the motion.
I'll second that for five minutes total. That what you asked for, two extra or five extra?
Total of five minutes.
Total of five.
Legal, do you say yes?
Yeah, I don't see I don't see it being a problem if you want to grant him extra time.
I think if the mayor doesn't want it, then I think we should as a council decide. I mean, I'm willing to second it and give him five minutes total. Because I do believe he has a unique position as a civil engineer to address this issue, and I know he's done a lot of work on it. And he probably represents a lot of views of people that would otherwise.
And we have the city. Bevco just made a presentation. I asked him to please remain in case we need a statement of fact, and he has agreed to stay for a statement of fact also, so.
Call the question.
I I've seconded the motion, so.
Okay, motion second. All in favor?
Give him five.
Opposed? All right, you got five minutes.
All right, here we go. My name is Brian Wells. I live at one oh two Fourth Avenue. I'm a professional civil engineer. I work for W S P USA. My comments tonight are based on my professional experience but are solely the expression of my personal opinion as a citizen. My comments are regarding the Luke two thirty Regional Pond and Drainage Improvements Project, specifically the risk to public safety resulting from the spoils haul route to the city brush dump at the end of Fourth Avenue. My estimate is that the project will require approximately three thousand trips on the haul haul route through town and up Fourth Avenue to the brush dump. This is about a hundred fifty, two hundred trips per day, which is more than the normal hauling, much more than the normal hauling operations to and from the brush dump. First, Fourth Avenue is not suitable for a construction haul route. The traffic, so the truck truck traffic from a construction project spoils haul route creates safety concerns that according to text dot require an increased roadway standards over roadway that's used only for normal traffic or occasional hauling. For example, here's a quick overview of how the frequency of truck traffic impacts the required lane widths. And this engineering stuff's going to come fast. Fourth Avenue is approximately twenty to twenty two feet wide of usable pavement, depending on where it's measured. Text dot recommends roads with ten percent truck traffic or less to be at least ten feet per lane, twenty feet total. That means that the twenty foot width of Fourth Avenue is adequate for the normal and occasional hauling to and from the brush dump. When truck traffic is over thirty percent, which is what this project is creating, actually much more than that, text dot recommends lane widths of at least twelve feet. Text that also recommends that haul roads be three times the width of the widest truck. A typical semi truck is about eight and a half feet, which means the minimum total road width should be at least twenty six point five feet. Today, I anecdotally observed two trucks passing between Hickory and Live Oak, and each truck had a set of wheels completely off the pavement. These required roadway widths assume a separate and safe pedestrian sidewalk or path. Fourth Avenue has no sidewalks, but many pedestrians, including students. That means that even if Fourth Avenue were twenty six point five feet wide, according to text out recommendation, it'd be potentially unsafe for the pedestrians that use it since there's no sidewalk or path. Separate engineering topic, the stopping site distance for a vehicle traveling at thirty miles per hour is about two hundred feet with increased distances on downward slopes. The distance between the crest of Fourth Street at Live Oak in either direction to the nearest driveway is less than a hundred and five, a hundred and eighty five feet to the east, and it's not my driveway, it's Irish Frank's, to the east and less than a hundred feet, a hundred and fifty feet to the west, both well below that. Additionally, these stopping distances do not always adequately account for larger vehicles such as eighteen wheelers. The retrofit solution for roadways that have substandard stopping site distances is to install stop signs to bring the vehicle's speed to zero before proceeding, which I had mentioned to several of y'all has been on my to do list to bring to the council anyway. Separate from this project. Second, the haul route operations do not appear, so that was engineering. Now I'm talking operator contractor operations. The haul route operations do not appear to be a standard at a standard level of care that prioritize public safety, comply with the contract, and in some cases comply with local laws and ordinances. Following are my personal observations. Many of my neighbors has have observed similar similar, my East Texas accent, and other activity. Many trucks are regularly exceeding the posted speed limit of thirty mile per hour on Fourth Avenue. They get a running start going up the hill and increase their speed going back down. The safe stopping distances I mentioned and the eyeball test of watching hundreds of these trucks says that even topping the hill at the posted speed of thirty miles per hour is unsafe. The trucks often begin operating on Fourth Avenue prior to seven AM, which is earlier than their contract start time and at least fifteen minutes before dawn. The last trucks are sometimes after five PM, which is well before sunset, but on eat on Fourth Avenue heading west is directly into the sunlight. Trucks are driving through active school zones, which most construction contracts prohibit. Some trucks are not following a prescribed route. We've often observed trucks detouring through First Street between our railroad park and Comfort Cafe, where the street is already of a substandard width to accommodate normal truck traffic and angled parking. I'm sorry, just traffic and angled parking where pedestrians are frequently crossing back and forth. The typical driving distance between parked cars in this area is less than twenty feet. Trucks are going up the hill almost entirely in the left line, shoot, left lane, left hand lane of opposing traffic. This occurs near Live Oak, where the visibility is lowest and potential conflicts are highest. They're performing this unexpected and dangerous maneuver for two apparent reasons. One is because the pavement over the sewer line upgrade has deteriorated to the point of making the cross slope of the road unsafe for large trucks. Second is to avoid a tree limb on the right hand side of the road just past the crest of the hill. The city is actually responsible to keep city roads clear to a minimum of twenty feet wide and thirteen and a half feet high per the International Fire Code, which is adopted by reference in the city of Smithville. About eighty percent done. No, I'm done.
Was it a total of five or an additional?
The total of five, total.
Can I just point out that I think a number of us have received written comments from Brian?
I can provide, I can provide, I will and can provide. I can provide, I can provide, I will and can provide all of this, uh, in writing. I will. Um, the, uh, the last thing, the last section that I didn't get to cover were my recommendations. Thank you.
This is a good time. I think this is a question of fact, just to reiterate, we really can't take any action tonight on this.
No, you cannot.
Thank you.
Refer to another agenda, but you can't take any action.
Thank you.
Anybody else signed up to speak?
Yes, Jenny Bush.
Ms. Bush?
Yeah, Jenny Bush, two hundred Fourth Avenue, Queen of the Hill. And the topic I'm gonna discuss is. All day long, five days a week from seven AM till after five. It's driving me nuts and it's made me crazy. Please. What Brian is saying is logical, sensible and practical. I'm telling you, it's insanity, it continuing it the way it is. I have documented at least three. Sessions. I had write down every minute who they were, whatever, if I could get their vehicle number and what the situation was. I, um, classified them as loud, quiet, fast, slow, clunky clanky. Brake. What's it called? Engine braking, gear shifting and muffler exhaust blowing. And out of all of that, I have, well, I left my paper there. It's in my head. Two of them are quiet. Good sensible drivers. Four of them are outrageously loud with their engines. They're blowing out their, their pipes. Six of them are just fast all the time. They don't care. Two of them must not know how to, you know, don't, don't, oh, the other guy had pipe things in his ears. So he can't hear his own engine, but I hate, I can't talk to people on, on my porch. It's so loud. I invite all of you to come up to my porch and watch this with me. It's very interesting. And then. The last thing I wanted to say because I left my nose behind is the vibration. It's not just noisy and unsafe. It's dangerous. Because I was watching a skateboarder today. I saw some chickens trying to cross the road. And only one truck stopped. The other one was just going, it doesn't matter, they could die the way. You know, it's important to us. Dogs and cats have been out in the street. And then Charlie and his golf cart, him and his wife were coming up the hill on Friday last week. And those trucks were behind him. Charlie couldn't pull over because there's no sidewalk, road. He had to continue to go. They couldn't pass him because they're too wide. They were, but they were right on his behind and they would not slow down. They just made him nervous. He had to come all the way up to, to the intersection in front of my house and pull into my street and then they go. They didn't care. They're not considerate. The contractor needs to make their drivers go slow. Hopefully the city can put out two truck driver signs, twenty miles for trucks. They shouldn't go over twenty. And they should learn how to drive properly. Oh, vibration. We don't want our halls, the houses to fall off the hill. That vibration could hurt our foundations. It's not right.
Thank you. But do, is there anybody?
I have Todd, um, Hen, Henmuth. On Fourth Avenue.
Todd, are you here? Oh, there you are. Okay.
And Erica O'Neil.
Erica? Hello, Erica.
Hey guys, how are you? Eric O'Neil, one oh three Fourth Avenue. And I'm just basically gonna state base, the, basically what Brian has stated. And Jenny and everyone else coming in here to complain about the noise. It is a lot. I mean, you can't even open your windows because of the exhaust coming from all of the trucks. Um, on Thursday, I actually stopped at the, um, right at Fourth and ninety-five. To take video of two trucks leaving eight, ten in the morning. I was coming back from dropping off my child. Then the next day I see Brian out there also recording and I was like, what are you doing? I'm like, I'm glad I'm not the only one that's noticing this. But I think it really needs to stop. And I mean, I, I just don't think they belong on the hill at all. That's it.
Thank you. Next.
I have, uh, Kale Lambert.
Welcome.
How's it going, council, mayor? Citizens of Smithville. So I want to talk about the development of Smithville. Specifically, the hundred and some odd houses that we're proposing to develop. This is going to change Smithville as we know it. Everybody that I've talked to wants to keep Smithville small. They don't want it to add twenty, forty thousand people over the next few decades. We have to ask ourselves. As a city, as a community, what do we want to see Smithville look like in the future? What do we want to see? Smithville as we give it to the younger generations. I have five children that I plan on growing up here. And I don't want it to be a big city. I moved to a small city for a reason. And once this development gets approved and moves forward, it's a domino that's gonna fall that isn't gonna stop. There's gonna be one development after another and Smithville is gonna turn into another Bassdrop, another Elgin, another Maynor. And it's from what I have talked to a lot of the people in this town, they don't want that. This city has remained about the same size for over a century. And from what I see, we can stay like that. We can be like Round Top and Flatonia. And we don't have to grow to increase revenue for the city because I know the city only cares about money. They just want more money. And I mean, they've increased their budget over a million dollars on average for the past eight years. In less than ten years, this city has gone from an eight million dollar budget to a sixteen million dollar budget. Where's our return on investment? Do we have good parks? Do we have good bathrooms at the parks? Do we have a community pool? Do we have anything for the money? The taxes that keep going up? No, we don't get anything. But the city just keeps increasing taxes, even though everybody says, don't do it. It keeps going up. So what do we want to see this city be in a decade or two? When my children are in their twenties and starting their own families. Because I'd like to see it stay small and I know a lot of other people would like to see this place stay small. And not turn into a big place where it's forty, fifty, sixty thousand people. It's stayed this way for a hundred years. There's no reason for it to not continue. So. I, I don't see any reason to pass this development and then D R Horton homes, we're gonna be putting builder grade homes right at the entrance of town. Like, have any of y'all seen a D R Horton home? They're not great. I know people that live in them. And with all of the classic historical homes that we have, I think it would tarnish the face of Smithville and turn it into something that nobody wants. So that's my two cents.
Thank you.
That's it.
That's all the public comments?
I have a question for Tim, just back, how, how much?
Hang on a second.
Okay.
Let him get forward.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, is that, hang, hang on just a second. Thank you, Tim.
Yeah, the question is just how much longer, uh, are the trucks running? Um, if you can tell me that.
Uh, two to three weeks and they should have it just about all wrapped up. So based on the conversation that I had this morning with the contractor.
And, and I know you've seen some of the comments because I know you've responded to some of those in email. Would you be willing to share with the council? As well as the public, kind of your assessment of compliance with laws?
Uh, I, I felt it was safe based on what I observed and my research, what's been done in the past, uh, past precedent. Uh, with, uh, another detention pond that the city had over at the warehouse, all of that fill had gone out there. It's a commonly used route. And I know when, when I discussed it with city staff, uh, there was never any, any indication that that had been a safety issue in the past. Uh, when trucks have used it. So based on my judgment, I, I did not see it as, now. If it was something that was gonna be twenty-four, seven for. The rest of all of our lives, that would be one thing, but we're talking about a three to four week project.
So my question was in, it, to your knowledge, and if you don't have knowledge, it's perfectly fine to say, I don't know. Uh, but if you do know. Is the, there was some accu, there was some suggestions made that the road is not, does not meet the requirement.
I think we've gone outside of.
Outside of that?
Yes, sir.
So the question simply of are we complying with laws?
No, sir. So.
That's okay or not okay?
No, no, sir. Cause what, what the city can do is in response to things that are not on the agenda item, you can make statements of fact and statements of policy. So statements, not.
So, so can I ask him, is this statement of fact that it's, that it's complying with all laws?
I, my recommendation is, is to move on.
Okay.
Thank you.
So what is his purpose of being here? I know, but the fact that it's not, so he really has no purpose to be here other than just to listen as an audience member? My question is, what can he do and still be in compliant?
Well, he's, he's a city contractor. He's not a member. I mean, he's not on the dice. I'm not sure what your question is.
Well, the question is, what, what information can he share with us in response to what he heard today? Nothing?
Nothing.
Okay. That's what I wanted to know. So you, sorry, I withdraw whatever I asked you.
Thank you.
Jason and the mayor, is it okay if we make, uh, statements of opinion about what we've heard right here?
You can make statements of fact, existing fact and existing policies.
Okay.
Is it an existing fact? I'm asking this, that the. Number one priority that we have as city council is to protect the safety and health of our citizens. And that we should be ensuring that all steps are taken to make sure that all processes are legally compliant. I, I made that as a statement.
Okay, thank you.
Question for Jennifer. What is the minimum amount of time we need to call a special meeting specifically for this issue? How much?
Seventy-two hours.
That's the, that's the minimum amount that we would have? Okay. So we said, well. Yeah, so that's two days and we're gonna go another, how many weeks did we hear?
Two to, two to three was the statement of fact that I heard.
Okay. Well, how does the council? Tell me, stop me if I get out of bounds here, but I'm, I'm thinking of making a motion that we call a special meeting to address this. I can do that, can I? Okay. How does my colleagues feel about calling a special meeting with the, immediately for the minimum seventy-two hours specifically to address this?
I would second that motion.
Have a motion and a second? All in favor? Opposed? Um, it passes, so are you, will you post a?
Yes.
Special called?
That will start tomorrow, correct? When you, you'll post it tomorrow?
I'll have to draft the agenda and post it tomorrow, yes.
Okay.
Anything else we need to do? Okay. Uh, next item on the agenda. Here, recommendation from planning and zoning.
Good evening, council and citizens of Smithville. My name is Garrett. Good chairs. I'm the chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission. We held our meeting last week on Tuesday. There were three agenda items. Um, first one, uh, seven A on yours packet. On a minor replat combining two lots into one for six oh one Ramona Street, Jones Edition Block two, Lot four. South Side forty-one foot and Lot five, property ID two one zero one seven. Property owners Edward and Barbara Lick. Uh, there were no, uh, neighbors that spoke on this. Mister, Mister Lick was there, simply stated that. He was interested in adding on to his house and that this was just a, one of the technicalities that needed to be done to be able to do that. Uh, there are other buildings on the lot already and that, you know, combining two lots into one, something that. That had to be done to be in compliance when adding on to his house. Uh, this did pass unanimously, uh, to, uh, to, uh, on the replat. Any questions on that one? Seven B on a minor replat, two lots will be combined into one for Smithville Community Clinic, properties located at eight oh eight Southeast Martin Luther King Drive. And three oh two Lynch Street, property ID one six zero eight four and one six zero eight seven. Burleson Edition Block forty-three, Lot six and seven. Property owners of Smithville Community Clinic, agent was Joanna Morgan. Uh, they kind of told us what they were planning on do there. Ms. Morgan did speak. Just taking those two lots into one so they can expand their facilities and the needs to help the citizens of Smithville. This minor replat was voted to approve, uh, unanimously as well. And then seven C kind of goes with that one. Uh. The zone change for three oh two Lynch Street, parcel one six zero eight seven Burleson Edition Block forty-three. Lot seven to change from SF two, single family and duplex district to CF community facilities. Property owner, Smithville Community Clinic, Agent Joanna Morgan. We did vote unanimously to approve that zone change, uh, to allow the community clinic to expand their operations there. Any questions on those two?
Anybody have any questions on these? They're pretty simple.
Thank you for going easy on me.
Thank you. Uh, anybody signed up to speak? No? Oh, close what?
Close your open meeting.
Oh, close, uh, we'll close the, um. Could you say no to anybody signed up? Okay. So close the public hearing, go back into the open meeting. Discussion in action on a minor replat combining two lots into one for six oh one Ramona Street, Jones Edition, Lot two, Lot four. South Side forty-one FT and Lot five, property ID two one oh one seven. Property owners Edward and Barbara Lick. Anybody have any questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move we approve the minor replat combining two lots into one for six oh one Ramona Street, Jones Edition Block two, Lot four, South Side of forty-one. South Side forty-one feet and Lot five, property ID two one oh one seven. Property owners Edward and Barbara Lick.
Motion been made in second. All in favor?
Thank you.
It's passed. On a minor replat. Two lots will be combined into one for Smithville Community Clinic, properties located eight oh eight Southeast Martin Luther King Drive, three oh two Lynch Street. Property ID one six oh eight four, one six oh eight seven. Burleson Edition Blocks forty-three, Lot six and seven. The property owner is Smithville Community Clinic and the agent is Joanna Morgan. Any questions? Entertaining a motion?
Uh, mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve a minor replat. Two lots will be combined into one for the Smithville Community Clinic, properties located at eight oh eight Southeast Martin Luther King Drive. And three oh two Lynch Street, property ID one six oh eight four and one six oh eight seven. Burleson Edition Block forty-three, Lot six and seven. Property owner is Smithville Clinic and the agent is Joanna Morgan.
Second?
I'll second that emotion.
Motion's been made in second. All in favor? It is approved. On an ordinance for a zone change from three oh two Lynch Street, parcel one six oh eight seven Burleson Edition Block forty-three, Lot seven to change from SF two, single family and duplex district. To CF community facilities, property owner, Smithville Community Clinic, Agent Joanna Morgan. I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion on a zoning change for three oh two Lynch Street, parcel one six oh eight seven Burleson Edition Block forty-three. Lot seven to change from SF two, single family housing and duplex district to CF community facilities. Property owner, uh, Smithville Community Clinic, Agent Joanna Morgan.
Motion's been made in second. All in favor? It is approved. Discussion in action on an ordinance setting, setting a fee for a vested rights petition. Approving this ordinance will establish a seven hundred and seventy-five dollar administrative fee for submitting vested rights petitions. Currently, there is no fee established for filing a determination of vested rights petition, which is an alternative to filing a P and Z request for a variance. Does anybody have any questions? Do they need Jason to explain anything?
I would like to hear an explanation.
So if you, um, so the vested rights petition is one of the many, uh, I guess. so the vested rights petition is one of the many, uh, I guess, uh, procedures that are available to landowners to either set, um, you know, what uses are available, um, what uses aren't. They can, you know, sometimes they need to get a variance, sometimes they need to appeal a decision. One, and one of those instruments is what's called the vested rights petition, which is a petition that they, that the landowner files that contains a certain amount of information to determine when, whether or not they have what's called vested rights under either our ordinance or Chapter two forty-five Texas Government Code. Right now, that's like the one thing that we don't have a, uh, a fee for within, within the zoning ordinance. So the way that the vested rights petition work, it doesn't go to planning and zoning or BOA like some of the other instruments. It goes to city administration and that gets, and then it can get, gets appealed directly to the city council. So it's just a little bit of a different animal.
Is there a particular situation that we're responding to for this?
Uh, there was, there was one, there was an applicant that requested vested rights. And so actually my office, uh, we came up with the actual petition of what it needs to have in it. I don't think we've ever received one before. So we came up with the, with the information that we need and, you know, some of the is, uh, requires, you know, getting records, looking at things and, and, you know, it requires some processing. And so the, the fee is the exact same as all the other zoning, uh, related applications.
You want a motion?
No, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? All right, I'm moving. We approved the ordinance setting the fee for vested rights petition at seven seventy-five as recommended.
Second.
Motion been made and second. All in favor. It's approved. The next item is a discussion in action on a resolution for submitting of a CAPCAG juvenile justice and delinquently, delinquent prevention grant. Did everybody have time to read over this? Do you need me to read the? Approving this resolution will allow the city of Smithville to apply for a twenty thousand dollar CAPCAG juvenile justice and delinquent prevention grant with a twenty percent match, which is four thousand, to allow a mentoring partnership between the Smithville Community Gardens, Smithville Community Clinic, the Smithville ISD and the city of Smithville. The mentorship at the gardens program will, is designed to help students who are at risk of potentially dropping out of school and developing antisocial tendencies. Its primary focus is to reduce truancy using mentorship, work in the garden and access to mental health resources to divert students from entering into the juvenile justice system. This program is designed as an additional step to SISD's discipline management program that be required at high-risk junior high students to do community service at the Smithville Community Gardens and will provide workshops related to mental and behavioral health and creativity. Approving this resolution also designates the city manager as the grantee's authorized official. The authorized official is given the power to apply for, accept, reject and alter determination to grant on behalf of the application agency. Jill Strube will answer any questions that you have. Y'all have any questions?
I, I do. I appreciate the program and its importance. Was this four thousand dollar match? Is it in the budget?
So this won't come into play until next year. So if, the other thing is that there's three organizations involved, ourselves, the ISD and the community gardens. And so there will be, it would be a three-way match. We're also intending on asking some, uh, for, for community members to help us put forward some of that funding. So it won't, it's not in this year's budget. It would have to be accounted for next year.
So we're being asked to make a commitment from next year's budget, correct?
Yeah, so she can file for the grant.
But it wouldn't be the full four thousand. Like I said, there's the three organizations. I would expect that we would, uh, once we would hear from community organization, uh, community members that might be willing to pay into that, then we'll split the rest of that by three ways. And it being four thousand and it being for the schools, I think we'll probably, I, I doubt we actually haven't impacted the budget, but I don't want to say for sure. So the, the max it would be, would be one thousand three hundred thirty-three.
The way that it reads is it specifically says the city of Smithville and partners agree. So there is some explicit set forth that there's a sharing. So it's a minimum amount of money and I think everyone agreed the cause is good, right?
I agree.
I just caution us that this can be brought back against us when other initiatives might be coming forward saying it was just a minimal amount. And then we have a bunch of minimal amounts adding up to a material amount. And I know that as we move into the budget planning process for next year, particularly with what the governor has proposed, which we will not be able to raise property tax rates without a two-thirds vote of the citizenship. I'm really worried about next year's budget at this point. I, I like this program. Are you up against a deadline?
Yes, I, yes, absolutely. This is due on the thirteenth, which is in three days.
Well, the other question is.
Thirteen is three days?
Do we commit to the dollars or is it subject to appropriation since it's in the next budget cycle? We can, we can apply for the grant, be awarded and then not do it if we don't approve the appropriation.
Yes, yes, sir.
So i- if it, if it really is next year.
It is, yes.
I would say that's our, that's our, I mean, that's our loophole to the extent, I mean, if, if we don't appropriate the money, then we would just withdraw the grant, right?
Correct.
Yeah. Okay, that's a good Plan B.
Well, I'll take a motion. Somebody want to give me a motion?
Yeah.
See if I can get this one right.
You got it.
I make a motion, uh, for the resolution approving the city of Smithville's submission of the CAPCAG juvenile justice and delinquency prevention, prevention grant and designating the city manager as the authorized city official and, uh, earmarking those funds for that purpose.
Second.
Motion been made and second. All in favor? Approved. Thank you. Discussion in action on appointment of Jeff Graves to replace Forrest Sanderson on the Airport Advisory Board. Anybody have any questions on that?
You want a motion? Move we, uh, accept the recommendation to appoint Jeff Graves to replace Forrest Sanderson on Airport Advisory Board.
Second.
Motion made and second. All in favor? Approved. Discussion in action on amending resolution two zero two five zero one five three eight, calling general election and correcting the voting dates. Did y'all catch that?
Yeah, what, did we just have the dates wrong?
The county came back and said that they had to put on, um, that the, the early voting would start Monday, the April the twenty-first. That's actually a state holiday that we don't observe, but.
Yeah, yeah. You want a motion?
Please.
Uh, move that we, uh, approve the amending resolution two oh two five dash oh one dash five three eight, calling general election, correcting the voting dates.
Second.
Motion been made and second. All in favor? Approved. Discussion in action on equal employment opportunity plan policy. The city of Smithville Equal Employment Opportunity Plan Policy has been updated for the council's consideration and approval. Did y'all see all that?
Yeah, I have questions.
There's a lot. Go ahead.
Uh, is there a presentation? I'll wait until after that.
Hi, Joe.
I thank you again for entertaining this project. Um, yeah, so this is one of those plans that's a grant required, uh, project or program that we have to have in place. We came up to a couple of months ago and it was a much longer, uh, uh, document, went through and really cut out as much of that and, and tried to consolidate so that it wasn't repeated, repeated, you know, five or six times. And we come up with a much stronger, smaller, shorter document that'll still meet the grant requirements. One of the issues here is that the, the action plan portion that Jennifer has up there, one, two and three. I did talk with staff about that. In order for us to comply with the grant requirements, we have to show that we are actively doing these actions. These, I think, uh, because of the, the way that we're going to handle this, that's manageable. The number, the number one is a thorough, uh, uh, a thorough analysis of what's, who's currently there. I'll be working with Cynthia and Jennifer. We'll work on getting all of the statistics that we need to be able to make for that baseline information that would be required by the grant. That's the, probably the most, uh, work that's going to be involved in, in doing this. But I don't foresee as that being, you know, it's, it's not going to be a really time intensive thing. It's just going to be a matter of us kind of sitting down and figuring out, you know, pulling the data together. Um, and I'll do most of the, the, um, uh, putting it into the format that, uh, that would be required. The other two parts are looking at the personnel actions and, uh, collecting data periodically. Sorry, I brought my wrong glasses here. So like my reading glasses, I'm squinting at the screen. But basically that's, uh, it's, that's about as far as, um, if there's any disciplinary actions. So if, if and when any disciplinary actions are performed related to any employees, at that time, we will record all of those metrics that are required by this equal opportunity, um, uh, action plan and continue to keep that as a, as a record. Typically, there's not a lot of disciplinary actions, so it, it'll happen at the time. We'll keep a database. We'll review it at the end of whatever period of time. Once there's, I guess, enough data points to make any kind of difference to see if there's any kind of statistical, um, bias being, you know, expressed by the disciplinary actions. So that would just be a matter of, you know, as it happens, we'll just record it and at some point in the future, when it makes sense, we'll review it. And then the last thing is anytime there's a job description or a new job or, um, uh, somebody is coming available for a job and we have to, we'll take a look at the job description and ensure that there are no, any kind of, um, you know, make sure that it complies with equal opportunity. So that's, that's really, and that'll just happen whenever we have a, you know, a change in position or a new job coming available or, so that again, that's going to be a very minor. And it's something we do anyway, really. I mean, we, we always review the job descriptions before we go out. So this will just be one more thing that we'll just confirm that we're, you know, we're, we're in compliance with that particular element, so.
I, I was the one probably spent the most time last time on this, so I'll pick up the baton again. The two, two areas where I just have some concern. One is it feels like I know we as a city have equal employment and equal opportunity in non-discrimination policies. We have those. So anytime we create additional documents that portend to restate or reiterate, there's the opportunity for ambiguity in that. My question, and since council's here, um, you know, I'm assuming the purpose of this is that are we required to do a separate specific document that stands alone, separate from our policies?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So that would then be the purpose of this. My question would be, in the event that we do this, does our existing policies and procedures take precedence over this document if we were to be sued?
I mean, I would have to look at that because I'm not a hundred percent sure what this is as far as what, in what context does it apply? Is it something that only applies within a specific program or is it something that applies citywide as, as basically a personnel policy? I'm not really, I can't answer your question without taking a look at what that is.
I understand. And, and I don't want to suggest that the content or the, the intent here is wrong. I think the purpose of this is we're trying to meet the requirements for a grant. That's what we're trying to do. But at the same time, I don't, I want to be careful. For example, if I were to go down and read equal opportunity policy, it lists race, color, religion, national origin, disability, sex, age, sexual orientation, gender identity, genetic information, what in the heck is genetic information? And is that a federal mandated requirement? What does all this mean and, and, and why are we doing a separate document that doesn't have the, that pretends to address equal opportunity and non-discrimination? That's different from what we have in our city policies. And then my other question you tried, you answered, which was there's a lot of things in here that we're agreeing to do. You know, collect data, report, words like thorough and, you know, keep records and things like that. That always bothers me because it only takes, we've had instances where we have people that are professionals at trying to get cities to trip themselves up on something that they can sue us over. And so I'm just trying to make sure, I'm perfectly comfortable supporting this because of the stated purpose, but I would like for our council as part of that motion to have this blessed by our council before it gets submitted if, if, I mean, I'll make that motion with that caveat because I really think we need to have council sign off on this.
If I may ask a question, mayor, or comment. I'm not sure I'm understanding exactly why this is on here in the first place. Was it part of a process that we had agreed to and this is final approval?
It was, it came last time and, and, and I asked for it. It was like, it was a lot of pages. I don't remember, but it was like eight or 10 pages. And she'd done a great job of reducing it to two pages.
Okay.
And she got rid of some of the redundancy, but even still, you know, there's item, you know, one, uh, three and five all seem to say the exact same things, just a little bit differently. And so it would just be good if we had the attorney look through it and clean it up with the understanding that the council wants to meet the requirements for us to be able to get grants. But we need to do it in a way that it doesn't open us up, I think, for potential litigation. And it needs to be consistent with our policies and procedures that we already have.
What, do you want to make a motion to that effect?
I will, but if anybody else, does anybody else have any comments about this? I don't want to be the one that's, that's acting like this is a big problem, but.
I'd like to ask Jill a couple of questions. Uh, Jill, when's, when do you have to have this ready? Are you submitting for a grant or is the grant already submitted for?
This one is, uh, related to a grant that's already kind of in process. This is paperwork that's required before closeout. So I can delay closeout for a little while, but if, if the motion could be, you know, accepted based on.
I'll make the motion. I mean, I'm willing to accept it as it is. I mean, council has heard my comments, but I'll make the motion that we, that we approve it as submitted, subject to the review and approval by city council, city legal counsel.
Legal counsel.
That keeps it from having to come back, correct?
Yeah.
I would second.
Motion and a second has been made. All in favor? Okay. Uh, Mitch? Okay, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Discussion impossible action on strategic initiatives identified in a special called meeting. Strategic initiatives. Councilwoman Jameson.
I do have, uh, Lee Kilgore signed up to speak.
Hey, girls. Hey.
I don't. Well, no.
Okay. Welcome. Hello, Lee Kilgore, four oh three Ramona. My comments are in regards to this email from Mitch. The majority of the items listed have either already been done or in process, can be done by city council members as part of the plan that was put forth last year. In terms of economic development, there's been several meetings. Lori Vincent, Downtown Renaissance, had eight sessions in twenty twenty-three that dealt with kickoff, retail, telling your story, attainable housing, workforce, tourism, economic development plans on, um, retail, bank, finance, et cetera. I, I feel like similar to the way that I feel about the superseding the comp plan, I feel like some of these things are also, you've got activities in place. You've got council members that have identified projects that they want to do. I don't feel like there's a reason for you not to do them. Just do them. Like, do them. What was that? Um, just do it. I know, Tom. I've got a whole, I got a minute and thirty seconds to say just do it, okay? Improve the comp, improve the comprehensive planning process. Develop an annexation strategy, develop an implementation succession plan. Those, those kinds of things like the succession plan for the city manager, those are things that happen with the city manager. But the other items that are on your list, I, I do still feel like you've got the ability. There's nothing stopping you from having town hall meetings. From saying, I am going to rent a room at the rec center. Y'all come and talk to me. I'm going to be over at the, um, general store. Now that it's fixing up. Brandon's got it. We don't need to reinvent the wheel. Reinventing the wheel costs money. The city, y'all have made a big effort to cut the budget to prevent things that we might have been able to do easier, but there's nothing stopping y'all from having meetings, getting out there and talking to people and asking their opinions. So I guess that's my statement for the evening. Just do it. Y'all have great ideas. Go do it.
Yes, every time we have a meeting, it does cost money. It's not free. And so, yes, we can get out and talk to people for free, have town halls, meet wherever you want to. Uh, we had a long meeting about this. What do you have to add?
Well, I'm not sure how to take. No, thank you. I'm not sure if that was a ringing endorsement or, or what. Part of the opportunity that we have, particularly with this council, because we insist on doing things in a transparent fashion. We don't talk about it behind the scenes. So we need to bring it out in public. And if we decide that one of these issues is something that we need to take action on, it's not going to take us long. But, uh, and mayor, thank you for giving me the opportunity to explain this. This keeps being referred to as my list or my email. It is a compilation and a consolidation. I'm already, I've got time. Wait a minute, I thought I'd get us. Wait a minute, I thought I'd get us. Anyway, okay, these items are not ranked. As we discuss each item, we can decide whether we want to further, have further discussion or information, or simply take no action and move on to the next one. We can choose to take action or give direction after everyone gives their thoughts. I can say that at a minimum, this new process is at least been effective in terms of, parts of it have been moved up in certain processes or certain documents, so we are bringing attention to some of them. They may already have been approved, but we may be expediting the execution of those issues. So before we move into the list, mayor, if my colleagues have any other comments.
Yeah, I, I do understand the list. I see all the things that are here and everything. What, what it comes down to for me, okay, like, and let's go for develop a formal annexation strategy. So if we were to start that right now, it would take, I'm going to say, a year minimum to get the strategy and the legal language done and everything we wanted to do and how we wanted to do it. We're going to have that strategy with land use and everything else that's going to be coming up with the comp plan. If you don't like what's set in the comp plan, they have said to us ad nauseam that we can modify the comp plan to suit what we need to have done. The wastewater and repairs and expansion, we're already having grants that are moving forward. We, we, we are not going to have the money to do that, period, unless we run a bond, bond issue. I would look at a bond issue, I, I just cannot see $25 million in bonds at a vote for citizens for them to come and say, yeah, y'all go ahead and spend $25 million and put us in debt. That's something I don't see happening. We're going to have to do it through grants and the other things. You know, the, the succession plan for the city manager, I believe that needs to be talked about in close session with the city manager. I think that's the appropriate way to do that. I don't, I'm not trying to hide it, but he is part of that succession plan, even if he's, if he stays here and hel, and helps us guide to find somebody new, or if he's fired on the spot. I mean, you know, it takes, as they say, it takes 72 hours for a city manager to be gone. I have heard that in Bastrop and Elgin will tell you it is so. The road repairs for MLK, I believe that Claire Beckett has already said that she's willing to help us with that. I think Tyrone and her will probably get together and find out how we're moving forward. The other things, I, you know, I would love to see them, how we expedite that and move that forward in the next budget cycle, and I believe in May, we can start with that. I think these would be great for that.
Mayor, I was hoping that we could go item by item and get people's opinions, but if we're going to go down and everybody gives the list one by one, we're going to get a little disjointed here.
Yeah, I, I do think council member Jameson, it helps, because I think Ms. Kilgore, you know, raised a, you know, a good point, which is, you know, why? You know, all these are good. I, I think it goes back to the last meeting. The, the why is that our budget process is set up, right or wrong, to, to put our, put us on the shot clock a little bit because of when we get numbers released for tax revenue from the county. And so, you know, whether it's May, June, whenever we start that process, and each year it's a little different, and Robert has tried to be, you know, as accommodating as, as he can to move that up, but inevitably we end up starting late and then we end up with not enough money. There's always more good things to do than there is money to do them. And everything on this has certainly cost lots of money, as my colleague, council member Jenkins points out, and they're long-term. For me personally, I want us to frequently put in a public meeting on agenda because as the legal counsel reminded me earlier, if it's not on the agenda, you can't do anything. So when you say just do it, we can't just do it if it isn't on an agenda. So, so we, we have to be able to put these on the agenda. And I also think it helps us as, as council members socialize amongst ourselves as well as the public about, is this the right list? These are all big deals. These are, there's nothing smaller than probably MLK getting paid. That's probably one of the easiest things that, you know, that we could do on here. They're long-term things, we need to be thinking about them. I would point out that succession planning is not about hiring or firing one individual. That's what everybody rushes to. Succession planning is about identifying your existing talent within your organization, all your department heads. It's about creating career paths for people in department heads. It isn't just what happens to the city manager, but we owe it to the citizens to have a plan if, if our leadership is incapacitated or leaves voluntarily or involuntarily. We need a plan in place. It needs to be more than, oh, well, the council, if it happens, we'll just figure it all out. That, that doesn't work for me. I think we need a succession plan and it's more than just the city manager. It's looking at our bench strength, looking at our talent, giving people that are department heads the opportunity to maybe grow into a city manager position at some point if they wanted to. So, you know, I, I think it's important that we think strategically. I think it's important that we put these things periodically on the agenda so we can have this kind of dialogue. But I get it. Do it, great, let's do it, but we got to have it on the agenda or we can't take any action.
Well, I do have a couple of comments. In terms of what this list means, it might mean something different for each of us sitting up here. For me, these, the things that I have on this list that were mine were a part of, that I put in the, for projects when I became a council member for the budget. I have been working on some of these and, and what this has done and has helped me is it's helped me reprioritize the time to, to begin working on these things more efficiently and in a, a shorter timeframe. We all get busy. I mean, we're all super busy. For instance, I now have a meeting set up to begin looking and getting public comments and a committee formed for addressing the rec center, possibly adding services, just using that space more efficiently. And so I'm working on that. In fact, I have that meeting next week. The blue highway signs, I do have an update on that. It's not great news, but we're dealing with text dot rights, so it's going to, it's just going to be one of those things. It's not off the table, but I'm still working on it. We have some businesses that qualify to be on a blue logo sign out on the highway. And in fact, today I was on the phone with text dot for about an hour and a half. I want to pursue that because we have 14,000 cars passing by there every month, 3,000, you know, over 10,000 every single day. I mean, 400,000, excuse me. So I want to continue to work on that and, and having this list is a reminder to continue to work on these projects. And also, I'm, I want to help. I know we, we have a process for updating the ordinances, but I want to become more involved in that. So this has enabled me to reprioritize working on my, my projects and I do appreciate that. So that, that's what this list means to me.
Mayor, one of the things that we ought to think about, I remember a few years ago when, when Joanna Morgan was a council member and we were looking at the noise ordinance. And then when we were looking at short-term rental ordinance, the council in the past has on occasion identified a council member with a specific initiative and have asked that council member to do some research and to prepare a presentation back to the council. So it's like owning a particular issue, going and doing some research. And council member Meeks reminded me, because she has been talking about how to maximize and utilize better the rec center, and I know she's been working on the DOT signage, you know, things like that, where the council would make a formal decision to identify, you know, someone like council member Meeks to go and do the research and actually get on the agenda and make a formal presentation, showing all the issues and asking for, you know, making recommendations for what we could do. That's something we could consider developing from this list is identifying people that have some interest in an issue.
And we brought them all to the budget. Remember, everybody had their list and you went out and we, and we brought them to the budget, which is the time to bring things that we need to work on. And Robert had sent it out to everybody to identify the things that you wanted to work on and incorporate into the budget. And as far as the succession plan, I think we have a great group of employees here and they're very well cross-trained here. And a lot of them know each other's jobs and I see them doing each other's jobs. So as far as the succession plan, I feel we have that in place. I think we went over all of these at the two-hour meeting and I don't really know why it's back here again.
Because that was the decision of the council was to come back.
So what do you want to do tonight?
Well, I would suggest, based on what I've heard, we'll go back and incorporating what councilman Etheridge has suggested, we can go back and each person, either who had authored this or would be interested in fleshing it out more and bringing it back to council, we can go down that. I think a couple of these issues, there's going to be more comments. Right now, we haven't done this in much of an orderly fashion.
Well, there's nothing that prevents any one of us from, from putting, having an item put on the agenda, as long as we can get one other colleague to support it and, and schedule it and, and isolate whatever issue and it might be, you might have one or two. I, I certainly have a couple, every one of us do. Maybe that's the approach is that we all feel empowered over the next two or three months to identify an issue and try to get on the agenda, do some research, come to the meeting with these, this is the scope, this is the problem statement, these are the pros and cons, these are the options, and these are recommendations, and then we could take some action.
I know that before I even came to council, water and wastewater have been my main priority for the city because I knew we were at the very end of what we might be able to do within a few years. Right now, the way BEFCO has planned it out, they say we need to start moving within a two-year period. I will take that one plus the impact fees if nobody else wants them. I think.
So are, are we moving forward with the process where we all volunteer to do things? Because if we're going to do that, I would like.
I think we need to put anything, a motion or anything, these are all things that you have brought forward and as we go, getting ready for going into budget, I mean, Robert sends out months in advance for you to identify things that you want to bring to the table and the budget to identify. As far as him changing the flow of water now, I mean, we are, we had budget, sorry, we had the budget hearing, everybody identified what they wanted, we have the comp plan working. The young lady was just here and I think we need to let the comp plan work. I think it's, it's, it is fulfilling. And if you want to have a town hall meeting, there's nothing that prevents you from having a meeting. I mean, work with repair on MLK, I mean, all of these things are works, works in progress. And I.
Are you suggesting, Mayor?
I don't know what, I don't, I don't know why it's back on the agenda.
Are you suggesting that we should not be tackling the important issues and prioritizing them now and then just wait for the next budget process?
Prior, yes.
We're not doing our job.
It has to be on the agenda. What actions are we going to make?
Our job is to determine priorities and process for the city moving forward. That is our job. Our job is not to sit back and, and wait for the city manager to tell us what we're going to do.
I don't think he does that. I think that these are the things going forward, leading up to the budget. So my question is, what kind of motion are we going to make tonight?
Well, if we would come to an agreement, each one of us has now come forward and gone ahead and made statements on some of the items and not all. We can go back to the top and say, one of us volunteers to flesh this out and bring it back later. I don't have a problem with that. That puts the onus on the person, or some of these may not get somebody who wants to do it. Again, this is not my list. This is a compilation, compilation of issues that were brought forward.
Well, a lot of these things are already in play.
Here's what I think. I'm just going to say, say this out. It's, let's, you are correct, Mitch. Let's just go back, you, if anybody wants to take one of these up or take two up, we can send a email to Jennifer. Jennifer can send it out to the other councilman and they will know what, what each one is wanting to do. If two want to do the same thing, maybe they can split that, that in half. It won't be a, a budget issue, it will be a time issue for the councilmen to undertake, to do. This is not something that, that way, we're fleshing this out, bringing it back to the council to say, here's what I've found. That doesn't mean there's any action going to be taken that requires money from our city, which is one thing I am very sensitive about because our city doesn't have the money to spend. So I want to make sure, whatever we do, we are moving forward in a, in a way that allows the city to keep the responsibility it has to manage the budget that is existing. We are the ones that if we're going to report, reprioritize things, it has to be a vote. So I don't think we're going to do that, especially since there's no money to really be voted on. If you want to do this as a councilman thing, you do it. We talk among ourselves by sending everything through Jennifer and we say, we're going to do this and this is how it's going to happen. I, I don't, can we do that?
How about I offer this compromise, Councilman Jenkins? We go back up to the top and we ask for volunteers to take the initiative and bring back a report.
That'll be fine.
So item number one, improve, expand, identify additional resources for economic development, dot, dot, dot. I will volunteer to handle that one. Item number, do anybody else want to work on that with me? Because you can't have more than one person working on it.
I'll take, I mean, again, I, I want to be clear, the, all these are, are simply somebody owning the due diligence and, and creating some cohesion around the, the problem statement and bringing it back. The council just can decide to not even do anything about it if they don't want to. It just brings it up with a little bit.
But part of these are work in progress already.
Well, I'll, I'll take a formal, I mean, I'll take an, I'll take annexation strategy and succession planning. I got no problems with either.
Hang on, let me go item by item.
We can't just take somebody's land, can we?
Mayor, you're not talking about taking land.
An annexation.
An annexation strategy, let me give you a sense because I, I would, I would, I would respectfully, I would respectfully disagree that it's a year to year and a half. An annexation strategy could be nothing more than simply recognizing that the city wants to grow its geographic boundaries. That is not a given. You heard a speaker earlier tonight that was perfectly comfortable with the town staying 4,000 like it has for a century. That is a sentiment held by a number of people in the community. So an annexation strategy might be that we do foresee the need or the opportunity to expand our geographic boundaries as a way to grow the pie, to create more economic development, so we can provide some relief to citizens for tax increases and fee increases on utility. So that's the problem statement is it's a good thing to consider doing. And how do you do that? All you do is you start by just a list of all the landowners and the land that is adjacent to our property and you start a process for reaching out to those people and documenting whether or not those people in exchange for some sort of city services would be willing to be annexed into the city. That's as simple an annexation strategy as you can have.
Very. Okay, you take that one.
It's a simple thing to do. It's not detailed and it, and it's not actionable. It's just, starts with recognizing that we want to grow and we want to get bigger because that is not a given in this community, I don't think.
Well, it's how we did Barnigan Emporium. We all started communicating with them. They had a need, we had a solution, and so we worked it to get them to annex into our city because we had a need that needed to be addressed with them.
I'm thinking more about the hundreds or thousands of acres along Highway 71, that if we're not proactive, somebody's going to come in and buy 600 acres and do a mud and they're not going to need us at all, at all.
An annexation strategy is an integral part of land use and economic development.
It's going to come up in the comp planning process for sure. It's an important part of the comprehensive plan.
It's in the comp plan. I believe it's been part of the discussion in the comp plan. Okay.
All right, back to item two, improve comprehensive planning process. Is anyone interested in that?
Why don't we wait until we see the 65%, the next round of production? Because it really, to this date, has been collecting data. We haven't seen anything hard yet.
Okay.
Maybe we wait until we see that first round of documents.
Okay, we'll revisit.
Feed off of that.
Item three, evaluate revised budget process. Does anybody want that? Purpose written to speed up our preparation prior to county communicating to us estimated funds available. I can talk more about that if someone wants to. Does anybody want that? I'll take it. Item four, Tom, you said you wanted to do annexation strategy?
I'll give us about one and a half, take quite a big one.
Okay. Item five, succession plan for city manager.
I'll, I'll do the same thing. I'll give you a sample that lots of organizations and companies use.
Six, expedite review and update of all ordinances.
I think, yeah, I think we're working on that. Okay.
Kathy, you want that? Ex, seven, expedite review of rec center.
I think Kathy has that one.
Item eight, review and consider action on blue highway signs.
That's all.
Nine, review and prioritize water, wastewater repairs and expansion. Ten, work with county to repair MLK and add sidewalks. Eleven, prioritize expedite creation of impact fee program. Mister Jenkins.
Mm-hmm.
Twelve, creation of community outreach program to take town halls to the citizens.
I think that's part of our comp plan. That's all of us.
I, I think the point is that we formalize a process instead of just at random. I think the point is that we formalize a process instead of just at random saying, hey, I want to go out and be at a certain part of town on a certain day. I think when we back it up with the power of the city council and our communication processes and go through community engagement coordinator, which is an official position, I think we can be much more effective with that. Anybody want that? I'll take it. That's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Go Kathy.
Can't have more than two people.
Go Kathy. Okay, so where do we go from here? What kind of motion do we make or no motion?
I don't think we need a motion.
Excited on the agenda. I've lost my piece of paper. Oh, discussion? Oh, it's financial report. Cynthia, you're up.
All right. You should have received in your packet the January financial report.
There's a lot.
As you can see, overall, we're to the positive. We're at 38% of our total revenues to date. Everything is going okay, as you can see too on the sheet. There was a lot of debt service payments, a lot of payments were made this month, a lot of the big bills. That's part of the reason the utility fund is not looking as great. Hoping a lot of that will turn around after this month. We'll start collecting and not have big.
Yeah, it's just timing.
Yeah, it's all timing.
But if you look at it, you know, last year, we were worried, and we actually came up short last year. At least we're running ahead of where we were this time last year on the revenue side. So it feels a little better than it did last year.
We just had a lot of debt payments and a lot of that all this month, and I paid them at the 31st instead of February 2nd. So some of them all got lumped together in January. So, some of that. I don't know if y'all have any questions on it or-
I appreciate the response that you gave me. For my colleagues, if you want some night reading and you're having trouble falling asleep, if you'll go to the City of Smithville cash balances and reserve page, and you'll look at where we were January 31st, 24 versus 25. In every major category, there's fairly material decline in these balances, somewhat to the point where it'd be surprising, including a 40% increase in our APs. It wouldn't be on the surface. It would be something that's alarming. But Cynthia gave a pretty good detailed explanation that she can share with you if you're interested, and I appreciate that.
I'm very appreciative that the two of you worked that out.
You have no problems going to sleep.
You don't want my report, no?
No, as a matter of fact, Mayor, I would bring a motion if you wanted. Find out where we were.
Mayor, I move we approve the financial report as reported.
Motion been made and second, all in favor. Tom? All in favor, all in favor, favor, hello? Approved. We're going into closed session. Executive session pursuant to Section 551-071 Texas Government Code, consultation with attorney regarding legal issues associated with the proposed enclave Public Improvement District. And the second is executive session pursuant to 551-071 Texas Government Code, consultation with attorney regarding legal issues associated with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Chapter 551, Texas Government Code. All right, and the time is, I don't know, 8:09.
Are you ready? Are we live? The executive session pursuant to section 551-071 Texas government code consultation with the attorney regarding legal issues associated with the proposed enclave public improvement district, no action. Executive session pursuant to section 551-071 Texas government code consultation with attorney regarding legal issues associate with Texas open meetings act chapter 551 Texas government code, no action. This meeting is adjourned. Okay.